We have Natasha. We're Natasha's son.
Come here again.
I'm invited to say I'm in Florida again.
Hello. I was wondering if I could talk to you. Um, do you have your caller ID?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Everybody, please rise. Good evening, thank you. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who is serving this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the stay of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We'll now do as a pledge. Pledge allegiance. For our United States of America, a true republic, which stands one nation, without individual liberty and justice. Thank you. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Counselor Conway?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Kennedy?
Here.
Counselor Leahy?
Here.
Counselor Mercia?
Here.
Counselor Milonazo?
Here.
Counselor Noon?
Here.
Mayor Samaras?
Here.
Thank you. Moments of silence. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in dock and chamber for William S. Rizos of Lowell, a member of the Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church and a Hepa Chapter 102. Bill was a graduate of Lowell High School, class of 1989, where he was a standout quarterback and all-around athlete. He went on to receive his bachelor's degree from the University of Mass at Lowell. He was the UMass Lowell quarterback from 1989 to 92 and was the offensive catalyst for the football team in its most successful seasons in the modern era. He was inducted into the university's Athletic Hall of Fame in 2010. Bill owned and operated Apex Information Security and Lowell. In addition to his loving parents, Christos and Angelique, William will be deeply missed by his children Anne, Caroline, and William. May he rest in peace. I'd also like to remember all those people who have died since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Milonazo?
Thank you, Mayor Samaras. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in dock and chambers for Dr. Dennis King. Dr. King is a well-known retired surgeon, beloved husband, father, grandfather, great-grandfather, and a lifelong resident of Lowell. He passed away peacefully April 19th at the age of 85, surrounded by his family after a long illness. He was born in Lowell, son of the late Dr. Leo and the late Alberta King. He was educated in the Lowell public school system, graduated from Bowden College and Boston University Medical School. After graduation, Dr. King joined his father, Dr. Leo King, in private practice at St. Joseph's Hospital. Dennis was a family physician and surgeon to generations of families throughout the greater Lowell area. He was associated with St. John's Hospital and later the St. Memorial Medical Center. His private practice was interrupted by service in the Army during the Vietnam War, earning an honorable discharge as a lieutenant colonel. A gifted surgeon, he will always be fondly remembered in the medical community for his quick wit, compassion, empathy, and a legacy of mentorship of medical students and young physicians. He was an avid Boston Red Sox fan, which is why I have my 2004 Boston Red Sox World Series tie on this evening. He really enjoyed seeing this tie. And he is survived by his wife of 62 years, Anne Marie King, his four children, and his nine grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. He will be dearly missed. Thank you.
Counselor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to also offer a moment of silence in dock and chamber for William Ronald Perry Lanetta. William Ronald Perry Lanetta, 72, of Lowell, passed away after a period of declining health Sunday on April 14, 2019, at Westford House Nursing Home. He was born in Lowell on August 27, 1946, and was a son of the late Biagio Lanetta and the late Geraldine Thomas Lanetta. He was raised in Lowell, where he attended the area schools graduating from Lowell High School with the class of 1965. Better known as Tiger, Tiger was a lifelong resident of the Belvedere neighborhood of Lowell and was a communicant of the Maccla Conception Church and St. Joseph Lithuanian Church, where he would frequently volunteer to help with the collection. He never missed a Lowell High School football Thanksgiving game and was the New England Riptides Women's Softball Team's number-one fan. Tiger also never missed our baseball games at Lowell High School. Many times, he would travel with us on the bus for our away games. Tiger is survived by his siblings, Judith Mendez of Wells, Maine, Teresa Langen and her husband, Jack, of Naples, Florida, James T. Lanetta of Lowell, and Brian, Abrian Lanetta of Townsend, and many nieces, nephews, grandnieces, grandnephews, and many cousins. Tiger will be missed by family, friends, neighborhood, and the city of Lowell. May his soul rest in peace.
Thank you. I also want to offer a moment of silence in dock and chambers for John Jock Howard Pearson Jr. John Jock Howard Pearson Jr., 69, of Lowell, Mass, died on April 7, 2019, surrounded by his family. Born in Lowell, Jock was an accomplished patent attorney, builder, banker, civic leader, and philanthropist. He graduated from the Belvedere School, Cotigan Mountain School, Worcester Academy University of Haffett, bachelor in law degree from Suffolk University. Jock was a senior partner with the law firm of Pearson and Pearson, an intellectual property and business law firm founded in 1901 by Jock's grandfather. He was president of Gateway Center Corporation, and he and Nell's Palm built the Gateway Center, the first new building in Lowell since the Beatles were famous. Jock served as president of Butler Bank for over 30 years and helped thousands of people achieve their dreams. Jock served on the board of Cotigan Mountain School for 25 years, acting as both chairman and president. During that time, in recognition of his service, the school dedicated a dormitory, the Pearson House, in his honor. Jock served as chairman of the Board of Lowell General Hospital and the American Textile History Museum. He received the American Textile History Museum's Community Service Award and the Merrimack Repertory Theater Paul E. Sungus Award. Jock treasured his family. He is survived by his wife, the Honorable Barbara Savitt Pearson, daughter Ginger Bailey Pearson, son John Howard Pearson III, granddaughter Bailey Pearson Burke, sister Sally Pearson, and brother-in-law Skip Millier, niece Samantha Millier and her husband Michael Baostra, and nephew Gunnar Millier. Jock was a friend of anyone. I can always remember one thing about Jock. He never had a bad word to say about anybody, anywhere, at any time. He was truly a philanthropist, and I can say as headmaster of Lowell High School, I turned to him many times, and he donated to many needs at the high school with one thing. He didn't want any mention of it, and that's who Jock Pearson was. So I'd like to dock in the chambers for these people. Now on to Mayor's business. First of all, we have a proclamation, National Community Development Week. First of all, National Community Development Week. The city of Lowell will join the communities across the country to celebrate National Community Development Week from Monday, April 22 through Friday, April 26. This annual celebration is designed to focus attention on the outstanding accomplishments over the past 45 years of the Community Development Block Grant CBG program. So we have a proclamation for our Department of Planning and Development, whereas the week of April 22, April through April 26, 2018, 2019, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program. And whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low- and moderate-income people. And over the past five years, the city of Lowell has received over $10 million in CDBG funds. Whereas the city of Lowell and other local governments have demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG program to address important local issues such as human service needs, job creation and retention, neighborhood revitalization, public infrastructure improvement, and affordable housing. Now therefore, I, William J. Samaras, Mayor of the city of Lowell, do hereby proclaim the week of April 22 through April 26, 2019, as National Community Development Week in support of this valuable program that has made tremendous contributions to housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community, given this 23rd day of April, 2019. We will also have more information provided by the city manager during the communications from the city manager. Anybody from the Department of Planning and Development wish to say anything? All set? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Walgreens Community Pharmacy. This is a new company that opened up in Lowell recently, along with help from the Public Health Department, and it's a unique pharmacy, and I'd like to have them give us a brief presentation of the uniqueness of that pharmacy and why it does offer some help to people who suffer from long-term illnesses.
Thank you. So as the mayor mentioned, we are here...
Could you please introduce yourself?
My name is Samantha Picking. I'm the healthcare specialty supervisor from Walgreens. So we're here to talk about a new pharmacy that we just opened on 25 Merrimack Street. So this pharmacy is a little bit different from your regular retail pharmacy that Walgreens has. It's actually called Community, a Walgreens Pharmacy. So it's kind of in the name, "Community." We get really involved with the community, maintaining relationships with providers and patients and advocating for those patients. So what we do is we have the ability to care for complex patients with chronic health conditions or even acute health conditions. We're able to manage their entire profile, but we also help with any type of other issues they may have in terms of getting their medication. So that could be cost management, helping them reduce their copays if they can't afford their medication, and then being there for the provider and any community groups that may need us.
Good evening. My name's Amanda Bowman. I am the pharmacy manager of Community, a Walgreens Pharmacy. I'm just going to briefly speak about our services that we offer. Our staff is fully trained to provide access to patients' medications as fast as possible. We do this by helping providers decrease administrative burden with insurance approvals for medications and delivery of medications free of charge to patients' doorsteps or any local Walgreens. We also make sure that therapies are appropriate based on guidelines, that patients have supportive care therapy as well for oncology medications, and we have regular check-ins with our patients to make sure that they're educated on side effects and how to take their medication. Another big part of what we do is financial assistance. So we work with manufacturers with copay cards and vouchers to provide assistance for medications, as well as patient assistance groups, grants, foundations, anything to decrease financial burden of medications. And Walgreens also has one of the largest inventories of specialty medications. Another part of what we do is adherence. So we enroll our patients in a program called Walgreens Connected Care and make sure that they're taking their medication regularly. We proactively follow up with our patients about a week before their due. We provide other services such as pillboxes and blister packing to make sure patients are taking their medications, and we communicate with the providers if there are any issues.
Issues with the clicker there. I'm Yael Alcleo. I'm the site manager at the location. One of the benefits of our location is we actually don't have a front store. We're literally just a pharmacy, and so the focus there is to provide as much attention as possible to the patients that come to us. Most of the patients that we service have complex disease states, so patients who have HIV, patients who have cancer, MS, and so they require the additional touch points. And so with most of our patients, we typically speak with them at least two to three times per month to make sure they get what they need when they need it at the lowest possible price. A big barrier, like Amanda referenced, is cost, and so for some of our patients who can't afford their medications, such as patients with Medicare D who have deductibles that might be $3,000, $4,000, we actually are able to reduce the cost to typically zero by enrolling them in various foundations that we can acquire for these patients. You also have the full resources of 10,000 locations. So for our patients who, you know, get service out of our branch but go on vacation to Florida or anywhere in the country, we actually have 10,000 locations in the country. So we'll actually help triage the patients to the specific locations so they can get what they need wherever they are in the country. In terms of patient offerings, we can deliver most of our medications directly to the patient's residences. So for patients who are unable to ambulate, that's a huge bonus because they don't actually have to leave their residence. It's as convenient as possible. Most of our payments can be done over the phone as well. So we're definitely a resource for the community. Even though we are a specialty pharmacy, we do service all patients. So I invite all of you to walk in and stop in at any point in time. We're right down the street on 25 Merrimack Street, so come in and speak with us. A lot of our patients who we service out of the community actually live across the street from us, and they come in and you have the opportunity to create a personal connection with the pharmacist and techs at our location.
Actually, for time, I want to thank you for the presentation. I want to welcome you as a new business, but I think what reason I asked them to come before us, I think what's important, especially to our senior citizens, the idea, medicine is so expensive, but you do have grant programs, which greatly interested me, in programs that can help people offset the prices, because we know we deal with a lot of our citizens who give up certain things, give up really food and other issues to pay for medication or give up the medication to provide food for their family and things like that. So I want to thank you for that service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now Lonny's going to speak with an update.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Lainey Iman. I manage the Substance Abuse and Prevention Division at the Health Department, and I'm here to speak just briefly on the Health Department's efforts regarding prescription drugs and our seniors with a specific focus on our unwanted medication disposal days. So I'm just going to do a brief overview of what our disposal days are, talk about our Help Keep Our Kids Safe campaign, just highlight some promotional efforts, specifically those we've done for seniors, just show some brief stats, and open it up for anyone else with questions. So our unwanted medication and sharps disposal days are held quarterly throughout the calendar year. Our disposal days are one of the many strategies that the Health Department is doing to address the opiate epidemic in Lowell and in greater Lowell. So disposal days are coordinated by my division, the Substance Abuse and Prevention Division, and we partner with the Lowell Police Department. So our, the Police Department will collect the unwanted medications and dispose of those properly, and the Health Department will collect the unwanted sharps and dispose of those properly. So our most recent disposal date was in March, and we're scheduling one for June, and as soon as we have that date, we'll make that available. So in December, we had a disposal day in December, we launched a Help Keep Our Kids Safe campaign, and it was really geared towards parents, guardians, grandparents, anybody who has a youth that either lives in their home or visits their home.
City manager.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to interrupt Lainey Edmonds' works for the city. We have no connection to Walgreens, and I just want, perhaps we can give this presentation on a different evening.
Of course.
We can't take, we can't support or not support any private business.
That's totally fine. We did, we did do a collaborative campaign with a Walgreens on Plain Street, if you'd like me to share that now, or I can wait until later.
No, no, no. Why don't we, why don't we regroup on this, and we'll bring in a presentation to the council on all of the, all of the services provided to seniors.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think it's an important presentation. I just want to make sure very clearly.
Yep, just let me know what you guys need to say.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think that you just, we just heard a presentation from a new business, 25 Merrimack Street. We always like to welcome new businesses into our city, whether they be a restaurant or a pharmacy. So with that, I would like to give them a round of applause for coming into our city. Thank you.
All right, next we have a presentation by the International Institute of New England. It's their 100th anniversary. The International Institute has served Lowell, city of Lowell, very well, and they're planning a gala, and I asked them to come before us just to give us a quick review of the International Institute's contribution to the city of Lowell.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jeff Thielman. I'm the CEO of the International Institute of New England. We operate in Manchester, New Hampshire, Boston, Massachusetts. We have, we resettle some people in Nashua, and we work in here in Lowell. We started here in Lowell in 1918 at the YWCA on John Street. A group of women got together at the end of, as World War I was ending and the nation was becoming more nationalistic, and said, "We should welcome newcomers. Lowell should always be a city that welcomes people from around the world, embraces people who come here seeking peace and freedom." So we've been operating for 100 years. Our core services are resettling refugees. We have a federal contract to resettle refugees who come to New England from around the world. We reunite unaccompanied minor children with their families in the region, mostly Central American minors who pass the border in the south. We have about 500 or 600 people in English classes in our three sites. We train people for jobs in the healthcare and the hospitality industry. We place people in all sorts of different jobs in New England, and we have a legal services program that is growing in importance, focusing on providing legal services, legal immigration form services to immigrants and refugees in this area. We're proud of the work we do. We're proud of our partnership with the city of Lowell, and I'm here today with our program director for the city of Lowell, who's going to talk a little bit more about our programming, how we selected the Lowell 100, 100 Lowellians who have positively impacted immigrants and refugees in the city, and then our community relations manager, Roger Mianja, who's going to talk a little bit about our event.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. As Jeff mentioned, we offer a whole continuum of social services for refugees and immigrants, particularly early-status refugees and immigrants in this community. Throughout our engagement with our Lowell 100 honorees for our upcoming centennial, we've been engaging with folks who accessed services from the institute 50, 60 years ago and are still living in the community today and contributing, and so we can see the lasting impacts that our work has on people. I just want to mention briefly that we did launch a new certified nursing assistant training program this year in partnership with Middlesex Community College, Abbasi Adult Education, and Duval Life and Wellness. We're training English language learners to become certified nursing assistants and to fill much-needed jobs and contribute to the economy. So we're really proud of that program and excited to tell you about it this evening. I'll just mention briefly, as Jeff said, we're honoring 100 people as part of our centennial. This was a huge community-wide effort. We collected nominations in community meetings via our website. We worked with our advisory council. We met with all kinds of trusted leaders. We vetted these nominations, and we're so excited to celebrate 100 Lowellians as part of our event. It does not include current elected officials, so I wanted to mention that, but we're really happy to have the support of the city and to have city manager Donahue speaking at the event as well. So, so thank you so much for, for the support from, from all of you for our centennial.
Repeat the time of the event again?
Absolutely, yeah. It's on May 1st at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. Doors open at 5:30 PM, and the event formally begins at, at 6:00 PM. I will say that there's been incredible community response and demand, and tickets have in fact sold out. If you're sitting here thinking, "Oh, my goodness, I really want to be there," please reach out to us, and, and we'll see what we can do, because we're trying to create more capacity and space. But as of now, we have 500 people planning to attend our event on, on exactly a week from today.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rajas Mianja. I'm the community relations manager at the International Institute of New England here in Lowell. Yes, as you've heard from both Jeff and Emma, we are celebrating this, our centennial celebration, our centennial. We'll have a party at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium on May 1st. As you've heard, it starts at 6 o'clock, but the doors will open at 5:30. So we will have an exhibit displayed, and which will give us details of part of the work we've been doing here in Lowell. You'll be able to see that. This is something that has been put together by the history department, which, the work has been led by Professor Robert Ferrand and, and his team, and it is some, something very, I think everyone should be looking forward to, looking at, and seeing what we've been doing here in Lowell. We'll also have some cultural performances. We'll have food from different parts. We've contacted or worked with different groups in Lowell that are providing foods from different backgrounds, and they are all restaurants from here in Lowell. We are all looking forward to it, and we hope that all, some of you may be able to join us. As Emma has mentioned, the tickets are sold out, but we are welcoming support or donations of any kind, so if you feel like you would want to support us in any way, feel free to reach out. Thank you so much.
I'll just add, I've brought several copies of our, of our annual report, which I can, I can leave for the council if anybody is interested in, in learning more about our work and what we do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the city council meeting of April 19th and the Transportation Subcommittee for Acceptance. They need a motion to accept and place on file. By Counselor Mercia, second by Counselor Noon. Next, we have general public hearing. It's after 7 o'clock. Orders to amend Chapter 39 Library, specifically 39-1 entitled Board of Trustees. Want to open up the hearing for those who want to speak in favor? In favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? That portion is closed. Anyone want to speak in opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt? By Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Milonazo. Roll call. Melanazo. Roll call.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Melanazo?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirilla?
Yes.
All right, next, we have communications with the City Manager. Motion responses for us is school playground equipment. Council Leahy?
Yes, thank you. Through you to CFO, thank you for the report, and it's pretty basic, just, you know, something's broken, needs to get fixed. So, I appreciate the attention you put on it. Looks like the new Shannon's--
Superintendent of Parks.
Superintendent of Parks has addressed a lot of it, you know, and, and the main thing is, when the report came out from the school committee, just, you know, we need to work together and get it fixed. So, thank you for the report. Thank you for the action.
Council Melanazo?
Thank you, and thank Council Leahy for filing, filing the motion. It is a complete report based upon what was asked for, but in traveling around the city, now that I have grandsons playing baseball, I see where some of our seats are very rusted, some of our scoreboards don't work. One park in particular, I was at Olivera Park, we could go Saturday, and I was a little surprised to see the condition that it was in. So, again, I know you're working, Madam Manager, to put together a preventive maintenance plan, but I really think that we need to pay attention to some of the maintenance issues that, that we see as we travel as grandparents and parents around the various parks and fields. Thank you.
Thank you. And Council, we did, I did have conversation, I know commissioners here, about Olivera as well as Stratham and other, other parks, so they are working on those and, and trying to address the maintenance issues, as well as the fields. Further discussion? All right, thank you. Next motion, Little League Fields. Want to thank you for that report, Madam Manager. So, basically, all the fields are in condition? They are, or they will be by their opening day. I know Shannon Cohen, the superintendent, has been meeting with the presidents of all of the Little Leagues to go over the parks and conditions. I know we've already had, I think Calery had their opening day last weekend perhaps, but Mr. Cohen, Cohen has been in close communication with all of the presidents of the Little Leagues, as well as those scheduling and, and going through the parks. So, and again, I know Ralph Snow's here if there's any questions, but Shannon assures me that the, the fields will be, will be ready. Council Mersey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Madam Manager. Usually, we get a list of opening days so that we could attend their opening day. If we could possibly have a list of the different fields, like Shed Park, Little League, or PYO, Pawtucketville Youth Organization, they tell us when opening day is and we attend it, so--
Yeah, we, I haven't seen that. We'll, we'll try and get that. I did see a communication today from the Pawtucketville League--
Yes.
--and saying they had an opening day this Saturday--
Okay.
--which triggered my thought--
Sure, thank you.
--as to all the others. So, we'll see if we can put that together.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll work with the superintendent to get that out too, but there is an opening. I'll pull it up while we're sitting here--
Okay.
--but we'll make sure you have it in advance of the opening.
Thank you so much.
Further discussion? Okay, next, motion, pothole update. Council Cirilla?
Hi, yes. Thank you so much for this motion, this response. It's, it's excellent. Completed 1,224 work orders for potholes, an additional 461. That's fantastic, and we, we deal with them in less than 48 hours. So, thank you so much for the report.
Council Noon?
Mr. Mayor, questions through you to the manager, and maybe, maybe Mr. Snow or Commissioner Snow. Suppose you said that you have two, you have two crew travel, two staff travel the street on a daily basis and ready to fix any potholes. So, suppose the resident living's tucked somewhere, say, Diego's or the South Lowell or back Central, that pothole hasn't been filled for a long time. Who do they call?
They would, they would, they can go on the website, or they can call DPW directly to have potholes addressed. Ralph Snow, can you--
They can call me if they want. Just calling after me. If they, if they put it in and it didn't get fixed, after so many days, I get a notification through the, the system that we have, and then I go back to the streets and say, "Hey, did you miss this one? Did you miss that one?" So, there is a check and balance in there.
So, up till tonight, they, they could be expected to get it fixed by next week?
Oh, sure. If it, if it came in today, I mean, it should be fixed before the end of the week. I mean--
That's good.
Occasionally, one or two might fall through the cracks or something, if you pardon the pun, but--
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You get most of them.
Thank you.
So, so it can be either by a phone call to DPW, ask for the commissioner, or whoever, whoever's available for certain. That number is 978-674-4111, or on the city website, potholes can be reported and are checked every single day. Mr. Mayor? Yes, I'm sorry, Council Conway?
Yeah, just very quickly. I've had a number of people say to me that this year seemed to be better than, than has been in the past. So, you know, when I, when I heard that, started driving around, and, and it's a, it's a Herculean task to deal with, with all these holes all over the city. It, it's absolutely incredible. So, I applaud the individuals that are out there day and, you know, day after day, and I, I think the job is, is doing, I think they're doing an excellent job with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Lee?
Sure, just one other thing. I did speak to, through you to the manager, different citizens have asked, and we've been talking with the city engineer too, this year too, it seems like a lot of the, I don't know what you want to call them, trenches or holes that have been dug up years ago are starting to really wear. So, maybe we could get a list of those together, like Boyleston Street, for instance, has about five different failures, and, and they're like that throughout the city. On some of the main roads, there's some, I don't know what you call them, digouts, cutouts--
Right.
--from over the years that have sunk and cracked, and so this might be the year to really start addressing those also.
There's a limit. It's like, I think it's a five-year limit. We, if we see them, we track them.
Right, right.
If people call them in as a pothole, we go and look, and we realize it's something from a--
Yeah, yeah.
Then we get them to come back and fix it.
Right. But you'll, you'll know what I'm talking about. Boyleston Street is the best example, but there's a few around the city that are like that. So, it's not the whole street that needs to be paved, and it's not a pothole.
Right.
It's some sort of--
Some that's sunk in.
Yeah.
And, and we, this, I know the city engineer has, has talked about this--
Sure.
--and looking to make certain in terms of when the work was done. There is that five-year window--
Yeah, yeah.
--that if it's within the five-year window, we can call them back to--
Right.
--to repair it.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
Thank you.
Next, we have paving and trench work warranty. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Council Leahy just touched on the five-year window for paving. What is, I don't know, but my question is, what is the life expectancies of paving? Is it five years and then it's come off, or what is it?
Oh, Christine Clancy, you were hiding back there. I didn't see you.
Oh.
City Engineer's here. She could address that.
Hello. So, in terms of paving warranty, when we typically, when you pave a street in its entirety, typically, you know, 15 to 30 years is, is a lifetime. When you're paving a patch, we require a five-year warranty, but if it's a really, you know, good patch, we expect it to last longer, and so really not needing repair, you know, 10, 15 years. It's harder to put a, an exact timeline on a patch, because that is, you know, you're excavate, and you're excavating within--
That's what's required.
--a portion of the roadway, but I guess the intent of the five-year warranty is to guarantee it for at least five years. If there is something significantly wrong with that patch, whether there be, something wasn't compacted correctly, you would start to see that within the first five years.
So, this five-years period warranty is about, is, 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 is for a small patch? It's not for a big patch or a paving of the whole street?
Correct. The five-year warranty is really for these, the patches. In terms of the, the streets that are paved in its entirety, we usually have a one-year warranty for the, that work. And that's, those are the contracts that we have that, you know, we're doing reclaim and milling overlay. Those warranties are typically one-year contracts, and that's typical with our contract language.
Council--
But I think a lot of the failures that we see, you know, a lot of the complaints or potholes are related to the, the trench work that we see.
So, a small patch you're talking about?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And usually, if that happens, say, a five-year period for a small patch, do we go back to that company, or do we look, as a city, look for some other company that do a better job than the one that we had?
If, if it's within the five years, we will look to go back to that contractor. If it's beyond the five years, that's where we look to see how we can address it, whether it be something internally with the DPW, or something that we wrap into a, a upcoming project.
Exactly. My, my point is not the five-year, because the five-year is within warranty. You go after that contractor to come back and have them do it. If they not do it, you hold to the bond.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So, what I'm saying is that the one that, five-year passed, six, six, six-year later, and it come off, and, and then the next time, we go, we go to them again, or we go into some other company?
Well, so, a lot of these patches, I mean, there's different reasons for these patches. There is sometimes these patches are from city work. Sometimes they're private companies that come in to ask to, to install utilities in our street. So, this, we don't, I guess, always hi, we don't hire those companies. So, as far as who comes forward to us, there's various contractors. It, I guess it depends on the, the trench that's being performed. If there is a contractor that is, you know, not, if we're, if there's a contractor that's not performing well continuously, I think that's where we use more caution, just looking to see that they're backfilling correctly or compacting correctly, paving correctly. But that, I guess, is kind of a rare case in terms of trenches.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the report.
Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Clancy. Let me just ask you this, in that same light, so a contractor comes and digs up a hole, and then he patches it, and because it says that if it's sinking before five years, then they come back and they have to repair it. So, my question is, when a contractor comes, they have to post a bond to the city, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, does the city keep that money for five years in case there's a discrepancy? How does that work with the bond?
So, the contractor is required to pull a bond for the work in terms of whether that bond value is five years, and technically, if someone was, that bond is good for as long as they're in business. Beyond, so I, I guess if someone canceled the bond after two, three years, that's something that, I guess, technically could happen. I haven't seen it happen before.
So, the contractor pays the city the bond for, in case work isn't done adequately after so many years and that starts sinking. So, we don't give them their bond back until five years is over?
They have to pull a bond with their company, and then it's, I guess it's, we have, we have it on file. So, we don't, and actually, so since I've been here, I've never had to pull a bond. Usually, we go back to a contractor, and they make the repairs instead of going through the bond process. So, it is a rare case, and I, we ha, I haven't come across it where we actually utilize a bond. We can if we need to, but I haven't come across it. I don't know if we want to--
Council Mercia, we have a--
Oh, I see.
--word from the city solicitor.
Oh, good.
Just to, just to add on to what has already been said, and the engineer's office, as of even the past couple of weeks, we've been working together to put a couple of different companies on notice that the work is not acceptable to the city, and that we do expect them to go back out and make repairs. And that was at the direction of the city engineer's office, to the law department, to prepare those letters. With respect to the bond, it, as the engineer is saying, it is rare that the city has to collect on a bond. We have done that in the past. Once the time has expired or the work is fully accepted by the city, we quote, "release the bond," but in the meantime, it's like an insurance policy that is there. The one that we had collected on years past that was really significant was for New Bridge Estates.
New Bridge Estate, Acropolis Road and that area.
That's right.
That's what I'm--
And we pulled, right, their bond was in place for about $800,000, and the city successfully collected--
That's right.
--all of those funds, and that's what helped complete the subdivision.
That's right. That's why I'm concerned about it, because I clearly remember that as if it were yesterday. So, thank you so much.
Council Melanazo?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate the report. My question has to do, and I don't know if I'm phrasing this correctly, but the means and methods when we actually put these projects out for public procurement, attached to the report are the supplemental requirements pertinent to city ordinance and so forth, but as you probably know better than I, the technology is changing so quickly that some of the asphalt, some of the materials in the asphalt, some of the equipment that some of these companies are now using, I'm just wondering if we can actually mandate in the bid documents that these companies have to have the state-of-the-art equipment and/or they're using the most recent technology from the standpoint of the mixture that they're putting in the street. Because again, you can drive down some Clark Road, for instance, you can drive any place, you can drive in the greater Lowell area, and some of these trenches are, are, are so good that you don't even feel the, the seam, if you will. But then others, they're a disaster. So, I'm just wondering through our public procurement if we can that, get that specific on means and methods, I guess is my question.
Sure. We do have mixes, I guess, that we recommend. I think an important element is when you're installing pavement, there are weather restrictions, and so really, what we have is we have these heat guns that can understand the temperature that is being applied. And I think that's a lot of the cases where you see trenches unraveling. So, we do have inspectors on site that are, so policy is, is that when you're backfilling or when you're paving, you're supposed to notify the engineer's office, so we can observe, observe the compaction, backfilling, and really placement of pavement. And it's important, the temperature, I think, is very important, and that is, that is indicator. And so, I think there's maybe not as, I mean, that's something very simple. There's also weather restrictions in the winter where it can be 10 degrees, and at 10 degrees, any pavement really needs to be pulled out and replaced. That's really a temporary patch. So, I think it's, there's more, you know, there's some more simple methods that we, means and methods through observations that we can require.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yes.
Council Conway, Council Kennedy, then Council Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city solicitor. When, when they were talking, just for a clarification, when they were talking about the bond and, and a five-year guarantee on, on work that was done, let's assume for argument's sake, after four and a half years, there's a problem, so we get that company to go back to, to fix that area, correct? And does the clock then start for another five years after they, after they fix that area?
I would say generally, no, although I would defer to the engineer's office.
I think we'd, I, I, it depends on the situation. So, I guess that's kind of a unique situation. If it was a whole street, it really depends on the situation, I think. Each situation's handled differently. If it was an entire, so there's examples where there's emergency work within a right-of-way that was under moratorium, that work was done, and if something's severely deteriorated, we make them come back. If they come back and they restore, and then a year later, or I get, or that window, I guess, I think it really depends on the situation and the severity of, of the issue.
Okay, so, so we don't have any--
I don't think there's any definitive clock, like where that clocks. It says five-year warranty, so whether you redo it, and I don't, I don't think, I think it's, it's coordinating with the contractor.
Right, not to labor over this, but, you know, again, if, if, if I'm the contractor and I know that I'm going to go and fix this, this pothole, but I, I can just basically do a, a fair job just to repair it so I can get out of here and, and cover that five years, but I'm not going to have to worry about going back again to fix it.
Excuse me. City Solicitor, like, come into this. Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, but to, it's a, it's a, it's a great point that you're, that you're raising. I think that moving, moving away from the five years, what likely would end up happening is that the type of work that you're talking about would have been, would likely be rejected early on, and so there would be some other remedies available. In other words, if the work as a whole was being rejected at the beginning, like a street, or it was apparent that the work was substandard and it was not going to last, then the remedy under the contract would, would probably be quite significant, and the work would have to be done correctly, so that it would then get us into the position where it will last years as, as intended. But it's, it's a, it's a great question to raise, though.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You mentioned that when you do a whole street, it's, the warranty is for 15 to 30 years.
It's not the warranty. I guess it's the expected lifetime of that.
15 to 30 years, which is like, you know, you could restate that as 15 years or twice that long. I mean, that's a big, but why is that? Is that because some streets are busier than others, or what determines whether or not it's going to be 15 or 30?
It could be the wear and tear of a roadway. It could be, you know, salt does a lot to the roadway. I think also the thickness of the pavement and the rehabilitation method. Sometimes you can get your milling overlays, sometimes you can, you're extending the life, whereas if you do a full depth restoration and, you know, really getting a good subgrade, I think that would extend it beyond. So it is a range, and so maybe it's not exactly 15, I think that's a good range that I like to use.
So it's probably really based on traffic, isn't it? I mean, the amount of salt that would be used and probably even the thickness that you would use and so forth would also be based on traffic, so that would probably be the...
That's wear and tear. That would impact the roadway.
Okay. Thanks.
Counsel Lee?
Thank you. Through you to the engineer. I appreciate the report and appreciate you taking our questions. So I had spoken to you earlier, and my comments were just on the time in between when we tear the streets up and we repave them. So I just wanted to reiterate that I happened to go down Spark Street today, and, you know, you told me you'd take care of this, but it is important to the residents that, whether it's a week or two weeks or two days or 14 days, that the street be left, you know, in reasonable condition. So I honestly thought Spark Street was atrocious, and, you know, the contractor needs to do a better job. That one person had a six-inch drop coming out of her driveway. She hasn't driven her car in two weeks. So, you know, we just need to make sure we're diligent, looking at the drops coming out of the driveways, the sewer caps and things like that, so.
Right.
I appreciate you taking, you know, my time, so.
No, thank you. I did look in, we talked just a little while ago, and I did look into Spark Street. So that was a mill, whereas mill, we take the road down an inch and a half, and so an inch and a half, we shouldn't be impacting the driveways by six inches. In that case, it might have been that there was some deterioration beyond that inch and a half that caused some failure. And in that case, I think it is the contractor's responsibility to maintain it. And so there will be lips of, you know, two inches, two and a half inches, or inch and a half at driveways, and that's typical in that interim period until we pave.
Right.
But six inches, the contractor does have to put down either gravel or milling, something to provide access. And I guess, so just to, if there's, and we do usually issue press releases, we have, city engineering's in the field, so if there is access issues, they can, you know, call, they can call DPW, they can call engineering office, and that we'll make sure they have access.
Okay. But the one point, you know, this reflects on all of us, and people really aren't going to call, for the most part. They're just going to sit there and take it, which is wrong. They should be calling, but I think it's our responsibility to have the project manager take a ride by and make sure the street's good. And, you know, if it's two weeks to be paved, they should drive by every other day, I would feel, but I don't run the department, so. But I just, you know, I have a knack for this. I happen to stop at the one house with the worst driveway, and, you know, the son said to me, the mother hasn't driven in two weeks, and they're running all the errands, so I got an earful, and I just want to pass it along that we need to make sure we do, you know, a better job. We are doing a good job, I don't want to, but, you know, we just, on a rare occasion, something like this happens.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counsel Milonazza.
Thank you. We're talking specific streets through the manager to the engineer. Mansion Drive was paved this year, and the paving job itself came out great, but the separation between the front lawns and the new curb is about eight to 10 inches. And they were told, the residents on Mansion Drive were told that the company would come back and put down loom and seed, and that's never happened, so I'm just passing that on.
Sure. I'll look into that.
Thank you.
All set? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Madonna Circle, Counsel Mercy.
It's okay. Thanks for the report, yes.
Next, we have Broadway and Protective Signals, Counsel Mercy.
Yes, again, thank you for the report.
Next, we have Festival Fees, Counsel Lee.
Yeah, thank you for the report. There was a little bit of a misunderstanding. Now, they got the report and went over that. I appreciate the explanation on that. Thank you.
Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question concerning the fees. Is it Eric, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Eric Slagel. Now, I understand if you need, someone's having a festival and they need a health inspector. The health inspector would oversee the food, if it's processed right, if it's prepared right, if it's being cooked right, and I can understand that. So they're paid, let's say, $160. What if they're there for 15 minutes? Are they still paid that much money or what?
So that's actually an excellent question. The collective bargaining agreement with the inspectors' union requires that overtime be paid in four-hour increments.
Even if they're there for 10 minutes?
We don't, they don't go to festivals for 10 minutes. They go to festivals and they stay. They keep it, they stay for the four hours, yes.
They stay the whole time? All right. So, okay, that's why I'm asking you.
Yes, absolutely.
Could you give me an example of a festival or special event which would need a building inspector?
Those are typically festivals that have tents or structures. So for instance, Folk Fest has a lot of tents and structures that are put up around the downtown, and so we have the building inspector's staff to make sure that the tents are put up appropriately, and they typically don't go to the smaller festivals. Winter Fest and the Folk Fest typically are where we have our building inspector's job.
Okay, I just needed to know that.
Yes, structural piece.
Sure. Thank you.
All set? Okay. Next, we have informational reports for us, Lowell High School Board of Action Letter. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Included in the packet is the letter that we did, the city did receive from the Mass School Building Authority, informing us that the board did approve the Lowell High School project. It laid out the cost of the overall cost of the project as well as the commitment from the MSBA. Later on in the agenda, there is a loan order that's being referred to a public hearing two weeks from tonight.
Any questions? Okay. Next, we have the National Community Development Week. Madam Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. The, in furtherance of the information and proclamation that you spoke of earlier, there is a informational packet regarding what will be taking place during National Community Development Week. So for the public's benefit, on Wednesday, April 24th, tomorrow, from 8:30 to 10, the Community Family Alzheimer Adult Day Health will be presenting at Broadway, 236 Broadway. This is dedicated to providing high-quality adult health services to keep adults in their homes. And so that's at 236 Broadway tomorrow from 8:30 to 10. On Thursday, the 25th of April, from 3:00 to 5:00, the CMAA, the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association of Greater Lowell, will be sponsoring Watkins Services and Youth Programs at 465 School Street, and this is to improve the quality of life for Cambodian Americans and other minorities and economically disadvantaged persons in Lowell through education, cultural, economic, and social programs. And then lastly, in connection with Community Development Week, on Friday, April 26th, from 2:30 to 4:00, Mill City Grows will be at Rotary Park Gardens on Richmond Street. Just by way of information, in 2012, Mill City Grows partnered with the City of Lowell in Back Central Neighborhood Group to build their very first community garden. Rotary Park Garden was that garden. This very special place has been the hub to many gardening, training programs, workshops, and social gatherings, and it was the first site of Mill City Grows Annual Harvest Festival Celebration back in September 2012. So we will also make this available on the website, or if people want more information, they can call the city manager's office.
Any further discussion? I need a motion to accept and place and file. By Counsel Milonazza, seconded by Counsel Mercy. Next, we have Communication, City Manager, Request Out of State Travel. One member of the Lowell Police Department, I need a motion to adopt. By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Noon.
I have a question. I have a question. I just found this kind of strange. The request is from the Lowell Police Department to the Drug Enforcement Administration. They're going to do basic narcotics school, and the school is in a bank, a savings bank? That's kind of odd. Was it a, is it a real bank now?
There could be a connection, a precinct. It does, the information does say it's in Laconia, the tilt in New Hampshire, so I'm not certain. We can find out exactly what the facility is, Counselor.
Just curious to know why they're having a narcotics school in a bank, but that's just my...
They may have a training facility and connection, but we'll find out.
All set? All right, roll call.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Milonazza?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, we have votes from the city manager, Accept Chapter 44, 64 Payments of Bills in Excess of Appropriations. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Accepting provisions of Section 64 of Chapter 44 of the Massachusetts General Laws Regarding Payment of Bills incurred in excess of appropriations. Any comments? Yes, ma'am. Oh. This was, this is the public hearing. Public hearing. This is the vote. Okay. All right, so I'll read it again. Accepting provisions of Chapter 6, of Section 64 of Chapter 44 of the Massachusetts General Laws Regarding Payment of Bills incurred in excess of appropriations. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Conway, seconded by Counsel Elliott. Roll call.
Can we just, I'm sorry. Sure. Through you to the manager. Can we just get an explanation on this? Is this city bills?
This could be either city or, this is accepting the provisions of the statute where the, where the city may be authorized to pay bad bills. There are no bills on tonight, but we have to accept the provision of the statute in order to bring the matter forward to the council.
Okay. All right.
We're not voting on any bad bills.
No, but it needs a public hearing. It does need a public hearing.
I just got word from the city solicitor.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So do we have a date for the...
Yeah, that's what I thought.
All right.
Just for clarification, it does need a public hearing, and that's just for accepting the statute, not on the bills.
Okay.
All right, so I need a motion to refer this to a public hearing from May 7th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, by Counsel Cirillo, seconded by Counsel Conway. We all set on that? Okay. That was fun. All right, next, we have orders from the city manager, Loan Order of $343,399, oh, I'm sorry, $343,399,220 to pay costs of designing, construction, equipping, and furnishing, addition and renovation of project Lowell High School. I need a motion to refer to a public hearing by Counsel Cirillo, seconded by Counsel Conway, on May 7th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. All set? Next, we have Auto 60-Day Trial. Waive the full reading, second reading by...
Honora?
Yes.
If I can interrupt. So I just, I admit the Perry Street is on here, and I have a motion for Perry Street, so I don't know if we want to take that out of order and do the motion and then vote on the, on the order, the 60-day variances.
Madam Manager?
I know Natasha Vance is here on the 60-day, and so whatever the desire...
Right, so maybe we just do a, what do you call it? A suspension of the rules. Take up my motion and then get into that, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Give a second.
Second.
So I need a second by Counsel Noon. And so the motion is?
10:04.
Has the Traffic Engineer updated the city council on Perry Street?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Noon.
So there's two registered speakers?
Two registered speakers.
Sure.
Madam Manager?
I don't believe the 60-day order has to do with Perry Street, does it? It does? Okay, just want to be clear.
Yeah. So we'll let the speakers go, but basically, I was looking for the update because it is affecting businesses at one end, and I wanted to hear what both sides had to say before we voted on it.
Elizabeth Silva?
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Silva. The 60-day trial was supposed to be done or finished on April 19th. We still have, the signs are still up. I was hoping that it'd be down for Easter, and it wasn't down for Easter. It's really hurting our business. We have Silver's Mini Market, as I've stated before, I was here April 2nd. I was hoping that we were going to have the two-way already working, and it's not working. For the 420 signatures that I had was to go back to a two-way road. I know that some people are going to be unhappy with it, but I'm hoping that that's what everybody will vote for tonight, that we go back to a two-way road. I always heard if it's not broken, don't fix it. It wasn't broken. Everybody was doing fine. I understand it's the condos situation, but the condos do have the overflow parking lot, so I believe they probably need to use as their overflow parking lot to bring over their cars from Perry Street over to Roger Street, which Roger Street is their address. That's all I have to say.
Next. Next.
Freedom McLeod?
My name is Freedom McLeod. I live at 88-90 Perry Street. I've lived there since 1975 as a renter and then as an owner when the owner passed away. It's always been a two-way street. I went to the meeting that they had before they tore down Old Mother Hubbard for the condos, and I asked, "What are you going to do for parking?" And they said there would be ample parking, they would have a garage, a driveway, and overflow parking to compensate for all their needs. I asked, "Are you sure there's going to be enough?", and I was told it would. And now here we are, arguing over parking. Now, after the business started and everybody was bickering about, you know, no parking, turn it to a two-way street, I noticed for almost two weeks straight that nobody was parking behind the buildings. They were parking on the street, which was something I hadn't seen before. And I don't understand why we just can't all get along. They have their parking and turn it back to a two-way street. We have fire trucks coming up the wrong way, we have overdose people from down the river, they're coming, the ambulance are coming up the wrong way, and now you've got the summer coming and kids playing on the streets. And it wasn't a problem until now. So my question is this, is the safety of the people who live on the, on the street and their children and their pets worth arguing over parking spot? That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Counsel Lee?
Thank you. So, I mean, we have been discussing this for quite some time, and I always believed that, you know, the neighborhood knows best. They live there. This family business has been in, has been there for over 50 years. The neighborhood residents know their neighborhood. It really hasn't seemed to be a problem until recently with people from the condos parking on the Perry Street. And I, you know, when you look at it, their front doors are on Perry Street and the, all the parking's inside on the backside. So honestly, I would just assume to stay with the neighborhood, stay with the business, and revert back to a... and revert back to a two-way all the way with restrictions of parking up by the condos on that one side, so it's not congested. Let the people with the homes on the other side of the road park in front of the house like they have been, and then the condo associations should just be following their rules and parking inside their properties. So I, you know, I'm not going to, I really don't want to see this family business or any of those businesses on that street suffer because of, of, you know, less than a third of the street up at the other end of, of the road. So I think unless it's a real safety issue, it should just go back to two-way the whole length of the street the way it was, so. And so, thank you.
Counselor Noon, then Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know that the city, city engineer, traffic engineer tried to do her best, but if you look at this condo, if you look at before they start building, when they come before the planning board, they, I'm sure, promised sufficient parking. And their lack of sufficient parking, or their, their failure to address the sufficient parking, now put it on the resident and the business. That's not fair. I, I, I don't, I don't see this as a fair way at all. If you look at, like I said, if you look at the planning board, when this condo, or zoning board, when this condo association come before this board, they promised sufficient parking, otherwise they wouldn't be building condo over there. And now they failed to do so, and we cannot put it on these people. It's not fair. So if you have to go back to two-way, if the safety is not a major concern here, then it ought to revert back to a two-way. Thank you.
Counselor Conway, then Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I happened to go down that street many times, and I never really saw a problem before when it was a two-way street. And, and again, I'm, I'm not going to go over everything that Counselor Noon and Counselor Leahy has mentioned, but obviously there was a, there was a problem up there with the condos, and there, there wasn't a follow-through as far as the parking is concerned. I, I will tell you that I've talked to people on their own businesses, and, and they, they're not doing as well at all as they did before, and, and that's a shame. And matter of fact, one of those businesses down there that I go to all the time, and an automobile repair business, and he has now been out, he's out of business, which is too bad because he's been there, he was there a long time, and he said, just, my, my business just dropped off significantly. So I would hope that we do go back to a, a two-way, a two-way street for, for Perry Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with everything that everybody said. I know the Silver Market, I know the family, they did, they do a tremendous business, and to have this glitch there is not fair to a company, a business that has been there for years and years. And the developer that built those condos made an agreement that he would be, the people would be parking behind in the parking lot, and that have ample parking elsewhere, and he reneged on that to the chagrin of the neighbors. In an effort to get this, the rest of the public hearing, I mean, not the public hearing, but the vote, could we separate that and take Perry Street out and vote separately on that?
I would just need a motion, but Counselor Milonazza wants to speak first. Do you want to? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can we wait and hear from Natasha Vance first? I just want to make sure that we're...
I was just going to follow up and summing the line of thinking that Counselor Mercier was saying about the developer reneging, which it appears to be the case. I don't know if that is, if you go back on and look at the planning board or zoning board minutes, but my question is maybe to the manager whether or not Traffic Engineer and/or the neighborhood planners have actually met with the condo association. Maybe what we need to do is actually have, you know, how we go with the police department out to neighborhood meetings, maybe have the traffic supervisor from the police department go to the condo association, have a neighborhood meeting. I vote to go back to two ways. I think that, as the, the woman from Silver Market, Silver's Market mentioned, if it's not, if it ain't broken, they'll fix it. So again, I do want to hear from, from our Traffic Engineer, if she didn't break the microphone, and, and, and then maybe look at, as Counselor, dividing the question. But at the end of the day, I think we need to talk to the condo association and find out what's going on with the parking and the microphones. Thank you.
It's one of those nights, I tell you.
It's time for a new podium and microphone.
Want to have any duct tape?
Yeah, sorry, that was unexpected. I'm just not going to touch it.
It's happened before.
Okay, so I just wanted to maybe just briefly go over the history of the, this Perry Street situation really quickly, and then maybe talk about the sixty-day trial that I was proposing. So I know a couple of people have said that if it wasn't broke, don't fix it, but there, there actually was a motion because there was a concern about how narrow the street is. And then I went and measured the street, and in order for there to be a lane of parking on both sides, it's not wide enough for two-way traffic. So there, there had to be a give one way or the other. When I initially proposed it be one lane, one way for one section of the road, Ms. Silva came to the council and said it was detrimental to her business. We considered eliminating the parking, and then all of the people who live in the condos came to the council meeting. I did, Counselor Milonazza, I did go meet with the condo association, I met on the street and talked with them, and the police have been out trying to enforce, because initially when the one-way signs were put up for the most recent sixty-day trials, someone took them down immediately, not someone authorized to do so. So the, the sixty-day trial didn't actually go into effect in December, it didn't go into effect until, I believe, February. So Ms. Silva is correct, it's supposed to expire April twentieth, which was just this past weekend. The, I have heard from a number of people who live in the condo, and we are talking about hundreds of residents. We did go back and look, I asked Development Services to look at the planning board meeting minutes. There were no conditions actually put on the condo to require them not to allow parking on Perry Street. So unfortunately, we don't have any legal mechanism to do anything about that parking situation at this point. The, the condos have a garage spot and a, and a spot behind them, so each condo has two spots. In speaking to the people on the street, and there are, almost all the homes are multiple family homes, there are two and three family homes, so there are lots and lots and lots of people with cars parking on that street. My personal recommendation is not to revert it back to two-way. I, I understand Ms. Silva's concern, and that's actually the reason for the sixty-day trial that I was proposing. And, and again, you know, I'm, we're trying to work through this, and I'm trying to find a balance that's going to work for both the residents of not just the condos, but all the multifamily housing, as well as the businesses. The first block of Perry Street, which is from Andover Street to Pond Street, there are a number of streets in cities that are two-way for a section, and then they stop, and then they're one-way. It does require signage, potentially pork chop islands, things like that. I do think that there's a potential to just make that first block two-way. That way people can get to Ms. Silva's business, and she's not, they're not restricted in any, in any way. They can come off Roger Street, or they can come off Andover, they can get to her business, and then they can come out and go whichever direction. If the, the people who live on Rogers, excuse me, on Perry Street who have talked to me have said it's significantly quieter, they're seeing significantly less cut-through traffic, and they feel like the street is safer, to the other lady's point that she's concerned about children in the street and pets, my personal, my professional recommendation would be for us to try this sixty-day trial. And I understand it seems like we're going through a lot, but there is, there has to be a balance between the residents and the businesses. That's just, that's my recommendation, and obviously the council can do whatever you think is appropriate. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Counselor Lee?
I'd, I'd like to hear from Ms. Silva again, if, if that recommendation thinks it would work or wouldn't work.
For us at Silver's Market, I believe it probably would work, because it's going from Andover Street to Pond Street. But is it fair to all of the other residents that are trying to come from Perry Street that have to go all the way out to Andover Street, back to Conca Street, all the way down to Roger Street, back to Perry Street to get into their home? They're better off to just leave their car at home and to just walk to the store? I don't think that's fair. I, I think that we need to go back to a two-way road, really, but that's what we need to do. I understand the condos, there's thirty-four condos, there could be two or three people that live inside those condos, there can't be too many, more than a hundred people. But yet, do we, does the city have to go back to the developer and say, excuse me, what happened with this overflow? Because once they build something, I'm supposed, the city's supposed to go out and check it out and make sure everything is fine. Like this, it's bothering all of the residents, not just those first few, all of the residents on Perry Street.
You all set, Counselor Leahy? Counselor Cirillo?
Hi, yes, thank you. I would like to ask Natasha, how inconvenient is it to just go around? Is it like a twenty-minute go-around? Is it a five-minute go-around, so that maybe we can try the sixty-day trial, see how it goes, and if it doesn't work, then, then we just move on? Is it like a half hour of driving through? Or is it just maybe five minutes or two minutes of going down?
I'd, I'd say it probably takes about thirty seconds to a minute to drive from Roger Street to Andover Street. It's not a significant time constraint.
Okay.
And again, I would...
That's, that's what I was wondering, if we're going to, if, if it was going to be a huge inconvenience to try the sixty-day trial, or if it's just going to be like a minute inconvenience of just going around? Because I, I, I think that if your, your recommendation isn't, you know, a half hour of everyone driving around to just get home, then maybe we could try the sixty-day trial, and if it's not working, then we pull it out, just like we have done in the past. And I know this for a fact, because we've done it how many times for Merrill Drive?
Correct, yeah.
So I, I think that, that there is, there is that option. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Okay, thank you. I mean, after listening to the residents and the businesses, I would make the motion to go back to a two-way street, because it just, there's, there's too much disruption in the neighborhood. The neighbors are telling me that even for them, just to come down the street, drive a few blocks up and circle around, every time they just want to go thirty or forty feet down the street, they've got to circle half the block just to get back to their house. So I would recommend we go back to the two-way street on the recommendation of the neighbors that live there on the first two or three streets.
All right, you're making a motion at this point.
So I make that motion.
I'll second that. Seconded by Counselor Conway. Madam Manager?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to address two quick things. One, this did start by a council motion, because the street is not wide enough for parking on both sides. So the city is going to have to do something that there will not be parking on both sides, which we will hear from the residents, because there's not enough parking now, and we will hear. So I think the suggestion from the Traffic Engineer is, is an attempt to compromise, and let's see how it works. The other aspect that I need to point out is, there is no going back to the developer. There never were conditions put on this project. We can't reinvent the wheel here. They, they did not have conditions that they could not have parking on the street, and so there isn't a legal recourse to go back. So we have residents who bought condominiums, who are living there, and there's not adequate parking, as well as multiple family houses on the street, and it is not safe to have, it's not wide enough to have parking on both sides of the street. So if the council's desire is to have two-way, then just from safety concern, put aside a convenience, it's safety, and if, we will have to make adjustments, which I am certain we will hear from the residents once parking is taken out on one side of the street. I only raise that because we will undoubtedly be revisiting this in, in the future again.
Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, I, I may be, I might not be correct, but my memory is that for condominium developments in the city, the requirement is two-point-five parking spaces, and this, this one has two. If you go in and count those spaces, it has two. So, so if it has two, and if that's what the ordinance says, then they're in compliance with the ordinance. But if not, then maybe they did go to the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals gave them a, some relief on having the extra parking spaces. I'm not absolutely sure of that. I look at a lot of different zoning ordinances, and I could be mixing it up, but I think that that's my recollection. However, my, my memory is the same as the Traffic Engineer's, and I do think that Counselor Mercier brought it up, and, and I brought it up, because there was a concern, because there were people parking on both sides, and two-way traffic could not negotiate that section of the street, and it was dangerous for people coming up, coming out onto Roger Street. And one of the solutions that we had several months ago was that we would eliminate parking on one side of the street. However, the houses across the street, and we should remember that there's, there's actually two condominium properties, because the, the church property is now a condominium property as well. So there's condominium properties on both sides of that street, but the, the housing, the houses that are there, the, the single and two-family houses, they don't all have driveways, so they need the parking. So when we eliminated the parking, then they came down and, and, and they were concerned because there wasn't any parking for them, and we were disrupting them. It seems to me, and I can understand the concerns that, that Mrs. Silva has, but it seems to me that the Parking Engineer's suggestion, that we come up, that we, we just take a segment of the street and make that one-way, and keep the rest of it two-way, that that probably is, that's probably the best solution. I think if we vote for this motion this evening, all it's going to mean is that two, two weeks from now, people are going to come in with asking us to make a change because it's, because it's dangerous and because you can't negotiate. So we can go back and forth, and we have gone back and forth on this issue. We, you know, this City Council over the past few months has spent a lot of time on Perry Street, a lot of time on Merrill Ave, and I, I just don't think that we should go back and forth and back and forth. So, so I, I favor supporting the Traffic Engineer's suggestion that, that we let this go on for a little bit longer with, with the trial, and ask her to come in with a, with a compromise that would allow for just a segment of the street to be one-way and the rest of it to remain two-way. And I think that that's, I, I think for the people that it might inconvenience at the Roger Street end, because it would be one-way, I think they, they would prefer that to have no parking on the street, and the street's just not wide enough to have parking on two sides and two-way traffic. It just, just isn't. Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Noon? We have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering, hearing the strongest suggestion from our city Traffic Engineer, yeah, I, I thought that maybe substitute motions, and I think Counselor Kennedy mentioned it, and that is taking a segment of the street, make it two-way to address Ms. Silver Market, and then, that's a sixty-day thing, right? And then making the rest, the remainder sink, one-way, just for sixty-day trial, and see what happens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My feeling is with the neighbors, there's no doubt about that, but safety is number one, and when you measure a street and it's not wide enough, and an ambulance or a fire truck or whatever can't get down, I have to, although I sympathize with the lady that's here this evening, I have to go with the side of safety. I have to go with the side of trying to get an emergency vehicle down the street safely. I'm very pleased to see that the portion of the Silver Market is two-way to Pond Street, that's perfect. I'm sorry that I have to go this way, but I have to err on this, err on the side of safety. So I do agree with the, what I see in the Traffic Engineer's report.
Counselor Milonazza?
Thank you. Based on the information that I've heard in the last ten minutes, I'm going to support the Traffic Engineer's report as, as well. And again, I know it's next up on the agenda, but Counselor Leahy does have a motion that is asking that it go back to two-way, the whole street. I don't know if that's something that... I don't know if that's something that we're going to deal with now, but again, after hearing the testimony, I can't support Council Leahy's motion.
We've been dealing with that.
So I think we should just vote on my motion, but the last thing I'll say is just, I think this is a situation where we're government stepping in, and we're voting against what the people in the neighborhood want and what the businesses want. They live there, they can regulate it themselves. It's been working all this time until this motion came in, and it didn't seem to be a problem. I really don't know how busy the street is. I travel it, you know, occasionally I'm down there, and never seemed to be an issue with me. So I think we're kind of, we're going against what they want.
We'll vote on the motions on the floor.
Vote on the motion.
Council Elliot?
Is there a parking permit required in this area? Meaning, for those people that are living on the street, shouldn't they be entitled to, there aren't your permanent parking as we have in some other very densely populated sections of the city, i.e., you know, Centerville, Back Central, some areas where you need a parking permit to make sure that you're living there and you can park in front of your home?
City Engineer?
So my question is, these people that bought condos that are not part of Perry Street, they're parking on Perry Street, perhaps taking up spaces for people that own and live on Perry Street?
City Engineer, you want to?
So I think the question was whether or not people could buy a dwelling spot. This isn't one of the parking permit areas, but you can, anyone in the city of Lowell can buy a dwelling spot. I did hear from residents who live in the multifamily homes across the street from the condos, that they are also parking in front of the condos. So I don't know how that would work with the condos being technically on Rogers Street. I don't know if they got a dwelling, if, I don't know how that would work, to be honest. I'm sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. You want to read the motion?
Vote Perry Street to go back to a two-way street.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
No.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
No.
Council Milonazo?
No.
Council Nun?
No.
Mayor Samaras?
No.
Council Cirillo?
No.
Okay. Do I have another motion to go back to? Council Kennedy, you had a, you want to just follow the-
Recommendation of the-
Recommendation.
Move ahead with the recommendation.
So I'll order a 60-day pre-trial. I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
By Council Cirillo?
Second.
Seconded by Council Nun. Roll call.
Council Conway?
Could you give me a clarification on that, on this motion, please?
It's on the order.
Read the order again, okay. It's so much to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning section 266, Texas, therefore entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations, Temporary Traffic Regulations, hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. But do you want to read the street? I think you want clarification of what's in it.
Natasha, can you clarify, please?
Could you clarify?
Councilor Conway, Perry Street would be two-way from Andover to, for the first block, which reaches Miss Silver's Market, which is Pond Street, and then it would continue to be one-way from Rogers up to Andover. And then there was a signage attachment where there would be two large, do-not-enter signs, and a stop sign, and then do-not-turn-left sign off Pond Street, to let drivers know not to go that way.
Does that satisfy? Roll call.
Yes.
Roll call.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Okay, yes, with that. All right, next, we have reports of Subcommittee's Technology and Utilities Subcommittee of April 23, 2019. Council Leahy?
Thank you. So tonight, we have the Technology and Utilities Subcommittee. Present were myself, Councilor Nun, Councilor Elliot, Councilor Mercier, Councilor Cirillo, Council Milonazo, Connor Baldwin, Craig Thomas, Catherine Moses, and Phil Ferreira. Also Jay Mason was there to speak. So basically, we got an overview from Catherine Moses about the aggregation, the options that we have, about going into the next contract, starting this November. We talked about starting a process where we could have multiple, get my notes, multiple rate, I guess. So right now, we are locked in a contract from the last three years. Contract comes up in November. We're gathering different information on the rate options, single rate, two-rate options, and how much green rate that we want to include. So there was a motion made, if the clerk could read back the motion, but motion was basically, well, actually, I'll let you read if you can find it, yeah. It's kind of complicated.
Start the process for the aggregate.
Yeah. So to recommend to the councils as a whole to start the process-
To amend the aggregate program?
Yeah. And then Council Cirillo added, what did-
The, 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 one versus the two?
Right.
Class one.
Class one, class two, yeah.
Class one versus class two, is class one, is it better?
Yeah. So what we'd like tonight is a vote from the council to start the process of petitioning to get a multi-rate. We are going to have another meeting, May 21, I believe it is, but we need to get going on the process now, so that we can offer this multi-rate classification for the city. So the ultimate goal in November is to come up with the best contract for the city. You would have a choice on how much green energy you actually want to pay for, so we can reach our goal by 30, 30, 20, 35 of renewable energy. And right now, as it happens to be, it's going to be, you know, a snapshot in time of what the rates are, but right now, green energy actually is the cheapest rate out there, seems to be. So we just need to go on with the process and select a, select our broker who can get us this rate for the city, for the next upcoming contract.
So your motion is?
So the motion would be to start the process.
Yes.
All right, seconded by Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Want to have a roll call? Yes, Council Cirillo?
Yes, I wanted to just also mention that this plan, it's a three, it not only, it has three really great aspects to it. It gives our community choices, it's green energy, and it's also, it's inexpensive for the community. So there are many different, there's, this hits on three key points for the community, and so I just wanted to reiterate that, that this is, this program is, it's forward-thinking. Thank you.
Council Elliot?
Just for the people at home, the contract that we have, which is community aggregation, it requires approval from the state, from the Department of Public Utilities. In order to amend our aggregation plan and contract, we have to go to the state. It's a nine-to-12-month period, so this contract's going to expire within five months, but we're initiating the process. And residents are going to have options, option one, two, and three. Communication will be going through the city, so, because we all felt, it's a very confusing process as it stands now. So Madam Manager, excuse me, I know there'll be outreach, and you won't be getting a letter from National Grid. We get bills from National Grid, because they own the infrastructure, so there's two parts to the bill. One is for transmission, and one is for the actual energy that is produced in various places. So I think it is confusing, but we're not going to be rushing into this. There'll be a long outreach process, but before we can even get to that point, we have to get approval from the state.
You are correct, Counselor, in terms of the DPU having to approve an amendment to the aggregation plan, and that is a process that, the length of time is because that's along the Department of Public Utilities can take, not necessarily will, but typically will take a while. And so, but when, at the point that there is an amendment and there are choices, which is the purpose of the amendment, so residents could make different choices or elections in terms of, you know, the amount of renewable energy they wanted to be receiving and so forth, that letter would come from the city of Lowell, so that the people would not be confused. Sometimes you get things, and it looks like a solicitation, or it seems like maybe this isn't up-and-up kind of company, and people are confused. This would come from the city of Lowell, so people can rest assured they're not going to get XYZ company. It would be coming from the city of Lowell, offering them those choices.
Right, and I think that's a lot of concerns that we've heard. I certainly have heard people calling, coming to the door, saying, "We can get you a better deal on your electricity." And by the way, if people don't want to participate, they can opt out. So there's various options, but what we're trying to do is get a good rate also, but also purchase clean energy. And at this point, the cleaner energy is more affordable, or it's a lesser rate, or people can spend a little bit more if they want more clean energy. So, I mean, it was a good report, I just thought I, I'm just clarifying for my own self and people at home that-
Exactly.
It's confusing, but we're trying-
We'll try and make it as clear as possible, once we're at that stage, so that when a choice is being put forward, both through education outreach, and that the communications will come from the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So motion?
I just want to say thank you to Council Elliot. This is complicated, I'm learning as I go, so thank you for clearing that up. Thank you.
So we have the motion to start the process. Roll call.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me. While we're on the Subcommittee reports, if I could, just announce that we're having a Housing Subcommittee meeting next Tuesday at 5:30. The city council referred the Community Preservation Act to the Housing Subcommittee, and we're going to meet next Tuesday at 5:30. Thank you.
In these chambers.
Mr. Mayor, while we're on the reports, it's not a report, but it's also an announcement. And I know we have announcements at the end, but I just want to make sure, people watching now, we're going to go kind of late, get this announcement. But the city typically will sponsor a pet fest, and it was scheduled for May 11. It's been rescheduled until the fall for this reason. The MSPCA and the Lowell Humane Society, they just conducted a free clinic just a couple of weeks ago, where there was spay and neutering. There was no licensing, but there were several hundred people that came and brought their dogs to this free clinic. So knowing there was this clinic, I thought it was best to postpone it until the fall and kind of have a, you know, two events. But again, there was no licensing. There was rabies, there was rabies, right, Madam Clark or Madam Manager? Okay. So that's just, we just didn't want to spend money and not be able to have, but people still have to license their dogs, and we just wanted to make that announcement.
All right, thank you. We have, we would have a report in the Disabilities Commission, but that's been withdrawn until next week. I also asked Councilor Nun to give a report on the mayor's youth commission that met last night.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for reestablished the mayor youth commission, and thanks to council for doing it. They had the first meeting, we had the first meeting, and I actually participated with them, because it's happened to be the first meeting. I know you did too, you have to leave to go to Lowell High School with regard to the school funding and whatnot. So we met first time at the mayor reception room. We have about 15 youth from various organizations, and that, organizations too, yesterday, the youth said that we need to include broader organizations, and so those lists also add to it. I think this will act as, they will act as an advisory body to you and to, you know, the council, if possible. I think this is one way that we build an inclusive community to address issues of, you know, violence in our city, or promote peace, or address issues of youth homelessness, you know, youth mental health need, and/or substance abuse, and so on and so forth. So those are some way that we get to, get input from youth, from various organizations in our city, and they were very excited, and they were glad that the city and the council and the mayor invite them to be a part of, you know, to hear what they have to say. So it was a great, great meeting. They had, the next meeting's going to be on the Thursday of the month, which is, what's it, May something, the Thursday of the month. So thank you, it was a great meeting. Thank you.
And we will send out memos to the entire council for an invitation to attend, if you wish, but they did express their thank you to the city council for being willing to listen to their concerns, so it was a good meeting. Thank you. Next, we have wire inspection, National Grid, replace New Gas Line, the 37 Greendale Avenue. Need a motion to adopt, accompanying an order by Council Kennedy, seconded by-
Seconded.
By Council Cirillo. Next, wire inspection, National Grid, replace the New Gas Main Line, Douglas Road. Need a motion to accept and adopt, accompanying an order by Council Milonazo, seconded by Council Elliot. Then we have petitions, property damage, motion referred to Law Department for report and recommendation by Council Conway, seconded by Council Cirillo. Then we have-
Motion.
Motion, a request, petition by Vilmona Maldonado, request to address the city council regarding National Prayer Day, May 2, 2019.
Good evening, your mayor. I made the petition, and they have my name wrong. It's Vil Maria Maldonado, for the record. I am involved with CCF, Charismatic Christian Fellowship Church, which I'm a member there today. And it came up into one meeting that there's National Prayer and the importance of it. So I would like to introduce, they did not put him on the list, I do not know why, my pastor, Rafael Najim.
Thank you. My name is Reverend Rafael Najim, founder and president of Community Christian Academy and Fellowship 36 years ago in Lowell. It's a church of eight locations, and I'm a founder and president of Citywide Church, about 15 churches in the city of Lowell that we gather together to bless the city and do a lot of social justice activities. I'm requesting National Day of Prayer is a National Day of Prayer approved by all presidents, all state houses throughout the nation of the United States of America, and it's held always on the first Thursday of May. So this year will be Thursday, May 2. I'm requesting the youth of, to hold a prayer meeting where all these churches will come, and with all these wonderful ladies and gentlemen, who many of you have attended National Day of Prayer in my building previously, but now we feel the urgency, because I go to the state house, to the Capitol, every year and hold National Day of Prayer there. But I would like to see it in my city, in our city, to bless the city, and just have 45 minutes where children and choir will come and sing this song, and many passes from different languages, about seven, eight languages, will pray for one or two minutes each, and the only thing we're doing is bless our city, period.
Any discussion?
We'd like to use the conference room, or any room that could fit 50 people.
Any discussion? I need a motion to refer this to the city manager for report, recommendation?
It's a motion.
By Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Conway. We'll have a report shortly, sir. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have city council motions by- Next, we have City Council motions by Counselor Mercia. Request City Manager have the proper department put crosswalks across Chemsford Street to Buck's Bar at 165 Chemsford Street. I need a second. Sorry, ma'am. By Counselor Leahy. Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That motion speaks for itself, I'm referring it to the City Manager. I know that when you have a crosswalk, they like to have a curb cut on both ends. I don't know that that particularly has it, but that area is very dangerous, and people from the neighborhood do walk there. Sometimes they're on the other side of Chemsford Street, so a crosswalk might help to deter traffic, to slow down when they see someone crossing in a crosswalk. So, if we could have someone look at it, that section. That was the request of the owners of that building, and they asked me if they could, if I could make that motion for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, by Counselor Mercia. Request City Manager make possible naming the North Common, the Roberto Clemente Park at North Common. I need a second by Counselor Leahy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this motion is to create discussion within the two parties that have cultural goals. Namely, one group wants to name the park Palin Park. The other group has no chance to use that, that park, Roberto Clemente Park, for a softball league, wants the name to stay, some want another location to be named a park. Middlesex Street is predominantly Cambodia Town territory, and it is quite evident that the Southeast Asians have cared for this park for many years, transforming this park into volleyball courts, bocce, checkers, et cetera. They have made it their own, and that, and they are requesting that the name change would be Palin Park, and I believe it would be ideal for them. Honestly, I feel it's good if we could do that. The Hispanic Latino community live predominantly in the area of the Acre, Salem Street, Merrimack Street area. They have within sixty-five Hispanic businesses in that immediate section. I know that because I frequent them sometime, and I love their Spanish rice, and they know how to cook meat, I'll tell you that. In an effort to try our best at a fair compromise, I would suggest by this motion to name the North Common Roberto Clemente Park at the North Common. And if that is acceptable, and only after it is, and it's in writing, or therefore the Hispanic community can give up the name of that park on Middlesex Street to allow the park to be called Palin Park. I, I think it's only fear that I'm doing this. I'm not asking for a vote of this council. I'm asking that we just contemplate it and think of it, and I'm referring it to the City Manager. The Little League Field at the North Common can be used for their ballpark with the name Roberto Clemente Park at the North Common. The field is named after Larry Conney, who was a Lowell boxing champ, complete with, it already has lights there, it has a bathroom. I'm not asking to name that field because the field is already named. I know that change is very hard to accept, but I feel this change would be a great compromise and the right thing to do to be fair to both ethnic groups. I offer this as a thought. No vote would be taken at this time. I want further dialogue between the two groups. I want transparency and input on both sides. Tomorrow evening, there is going to be a meeting with the Latino, Hispanic members of the community at the Amen Mercia Center at 6:30, and then they're working their way with the Southeast Asians right now to try to come together with a discussion to see if any of this would be okay. I know that people say, "Ugh," but they already have a field, they got a field over there at Kumun Zellus Park. Yes, they do, and we would say that you could call your field Palin Field, but they don't want that. They want the park, and I can see that. They should have it. That is predominantly their neighborhood, their area, but I wouldn't give a loaf of bread to one group and a half a loaf to another. That's, that's just not fair. I think this is a compromise that I think if you think about it, maybe this motion will go nowhere. I don't know that, but at least I'm trying to be fair to both ethnic groups. At least I'm trying to work out a plan that will make the most people happy. I know everybody will not be happy when you have changed. Some people are always set in their ways, and they never want to relinquish Clemente Park. But I would say that the people that are here this evening are working tirelessly, they, they're not registered to speak tonight, they, they just want to get this out in the open. They want to meet first, they want to get input from the Southeast Asian group, their population. I, I ran this by Steve Stowle because I heard that he said, "Ooh, I don't know, there's, you can't do that." But when I explained to him that I would not ever take the name North Common away, it would be Roberto Clemente Park at the North Common, he said he did not have a problem with that, as long as the words North Common remained. I understand that some probably will not support it because that there's, they think, assume that there's a covenant, and we can't do that. Well, many years ago, some of my colleagues might remember, many, many people, friends of Stanley Stockloser, wanted me to add Stanley Stockloser's name to Alumni Field, and there was actually a covenant, and they investigated it, said, "No, you can't do it, no, you can't do it." Madam Manager, you were a City Counselor at the time. I said, "I will bring this motion in six times, as many times as I can to, to make this happen," and the sixth time it did, and they, Stanley Stockloser's name is there on the building. We didn't change the name to Stanley Stockloser at Alumni Field, but we did put his name at Alumni Field. And today, there is a prominent family who has the name at Alumni Field, so, and there was a covenant in place there. So, I think this is doable, I think it can be done. I think it's the only fair thing to do. I, I, I don't want to take the name of someone away and I, and, and give them a, a field when everybody else wants a park. So, it's a doable option, I think. There's, I don't know how my colleagues feel about it. I know that there still should be a policy in place. That's what my belief is. I know that the city solicitor should look with the U Manager, as well as the Board of Parks, to come with a policy so that we wouldn't have to do, do this. I'm not here tonight to belabor an issue, absolutely not. In fact, if we never said another word, would I think it should, would go away? I don't want to say that. I want to say that things can happen for the best for everybody, and this is just a compromise to get the wheels moving, to see if we can be fair to both groups in their respective areas of the city. And that's all that I'm trying to do with this. I'm not trying to hurt anybody, I'm not trying to make enemies or a war with one group over another. You saw a few weeks ago when they wanted lights in a, in a concession stand at the field over there at, behind the Bartlett School, and you saw the, the Southeast Asians and the Latinos together. What a sight was that, that they were both trying to help each other. And that's what I'm trying to do here with this, to get both parties together and try to figure, could this be doable? This is your area, your Cambodia Town, yes, you should have your Palin Park. We said you could have Palin Field, they don't want it, we tried, they want the park, maybe we can still do it. If we could get the Roberto Clemente Park at the North Common, I think it would be best all around for everybody. That's all I'm trying to do. So, thank you.
Counselor Mercia, we requested the City Manager review and try to come up with a policy. So, do you want this, basically saying, include this in the thought process?
Yes, yes, I would. And, and not without input. We are going to be talking to a lot of Southeast Asians, a lot of Latino, Hispanic people, because it isn't up to nine people. It is, it's up to the, the people of that ethnic background. It isn't up to, to me, and I think this is a compromise that would be amenable to a lot of people, and we're still going to work with, with them to see what they think. Maybe they don't want it, I don't know that, but we'll try to find out and see if they do.
All set. Counselor Kennedy?
The only thing I would like to say is that in part of the report should include how the North Common got to be named, the North Common, and why it is the North Common, and if one of the bills at the North Common is, is named for Larry Conney, who came from the Acre, then that should be included in the report as well. And, and also too, I think we should keep in mind that all the parks in the city, about everybody, that it isn't one group gets a park and someone else has a park someplace else, and somebody else has one someplace else. Anybody in the city can use any park in the city, and I, I think we have to keep that spirit alive in any deliberations that we have about this issue. That's all.
Counselor Millenazzo?
Thank you. I'll support the motion. I think that Counselor Mercia is coming at it from a point of compromise, as she said, so she's looking for some information from the City Manager, which makes perfect sense. And I think that at the end of the day, we may run the risk of having a Roberto Park over in the Lowell Islands, over in North Common, and a Roberto Clemente Field over the Kumun Zellus Park. So, you just need to kind of bundle the whole thing and try to get to where Counselor Mercia wants us to get to. So, that's my only comment, that I, you know, again, it's bringing what's forward in the spirit of compromise, sent to the City Manager's office, and we'll see where it goes from there. Thank you.
All set.
Lastly, I just want to comment on this. I understand that every park in the city should be used for everybody, but could you please tell me how the Latino community can have a baseball field where at Roberto Clemente Park, when it's predominantly volleyball? How could you take down nets or re-stripe it or whatever? I mean, how could you do that? I don't know how you could do that. They would feel like they were intruding on territory that was made for something else, and I don't think they'd want to inconvenience or hurt anybody in that respect. That's all I have to say. And I'm going to tell you this, I know that we spend a lot of money, CDBG funding, on different parks in the city and stuff, and if people come from Fitchburg or Newton and they come in our field, they have every right to do that too, so I do understand that. I'm not saying you can't, but I don't want, think they want to intrude on an area that is designed for a certain particular sport. That's all I got to say with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I just would want to point out that there probably, that there was a time when there was a baseball field there.
That's right, I lived there.
Which is why it was named after Roberto Clemente, I assume. I was not on, the council was not involved in, in naming it for him, but, you know, the park has changed, but there was a, a baseball field there.
There was.
Maybe in, some thought would, it should have been given to just leaving it alone as Washington Park, which is what it was in the first place, but we're way beyond that now.
Counselor Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the motion, and, you know, it's, it's been about five years since we started working on this, and Counselor Mercia was in all of these meetings, they're all public meetings. Nothing was done behind closed doors. We, this came to us when Maria Claudio from the Roberto Clemente Little League contacted us and probably other counselors at the time, saying, "We, we don't have a field. We're getting permits, but we're, we're playing some here, some there, kids can't get rides. We'd like something in the Acre, because that's where most of the kids that play in the league are from." And, and we went to work, and we looked, we looked throughout the city. Where is there possibly a park? Where is there a location? And we identified one at the Bartlett School. There was no intent not to be fair or unfair, or a loaf, a half a loaf, that wasn't the point. The point was, they didn't have a place to call home. They didn't have a field as other neighborhoods or leagues had, so we, we identified one, and the city put lots of money into it with the, with the grass and the turf and fencing, and we dedicated it back in 2017. So, there wasn't any premeditated, and we worked with the Coalition for Better Acre, we worked with the Acre Youth Sports League as well. We tried to include everybody that we possibly could. There was never any intent not to include the Latino community. I want to make that clear, because this was, this is all about inclusiveness, and it was from day one, and there seems to be a perception that that's not the case. We just tried to reach out to whoever, the league came to us, and I see the St. Orange's, and they were at the meeting, and, and we were just trying to do a good thing, and we did do a good thing, in my opinion. So, I, I guess they're just a little, I, I just wanted to make that. There was never a deal, it wasn't a quid pro quo. The Cambodians, actually, when the city invested thousands of federal dollars to, to improve the park, that was, that was really nothing. It was an old softball field, and it hadn't been used, you know, to make the improvements. That was, that was, you know, back in twenty, I believe, 2013. So, I, I just want to make that clear. We, we're trying to do the right thing, and I think, I believe we did do the right thing because that league is vibrant. Acre Youth, they, the existing Acre Youth Baseball, they donated equipment, and, and I certainly support it every chance that I can, so, but I'm, I'm confused with the motion, to the maker of the motion. It says we want to rename it from North Common to Roberto Clemente at North Common. North Common is already named for somebody. It was dedicated on June 1st, 1967. It was dedicated to a Vietnam hero, the Greek American Veterans League Post Number One under the chairmanship of John Theokas. It was dedicated to, it was dedicated to a resident of the city. The title says, "Dedicate North Common to Vietnam Hero" on Sunday. Congressman Badmoss was the principal speaker at the Sunday dedication. The park was formally dedicated as the Peter V. Ceroflaklius Memorial Park. Cerof, excuse me, I pronounced it wrong, Ceroflaklius. Honoring this young hero who gave his life in the Vietnam War, giving aid to his woman comrades, his wounded comrades. So, I, is the intent to rename it? There is, there's a memorial at the park, there's a Greek American, for the Greek American Legion. So, the park at North Common is dedicated to Peter V. Ceroflaklius. In honor of his memory and all veterans from the City Lowell who served, excuse me, in the Acre, who served their country in the time of need. So, I, I knew there was a reason because we looked at this, and it is, it's because it's, it's dedicated to a war hero.
Okay, Counselor Mercia?
There are many stones and plaques throughout the city. Doesn't mean that they change the name to that veteran. They have plaques and monuments at different parks. I never heard that they named that park after that.
Counselor, I'll give you a copy of it. This was dedicated June 1st, 1967, and it was the North.
The stone was dedicated. I don't believe the name was changed. Then where is the name that says that it's that veteran?
Dedicate North Common to Veteran Hero.
They dedicated the monument at the North Common.
I will be happy to provide you a copy of.
We're referring it to the City Manager.
An article, and I'll give you a copy of. Article, and I'll give you a copy of the monument that stands there that says that the park is dedicated to them. We knew this. Mr. Belga told us that, that we couldn't do that when we looked at this.
And you know what, Mr. Mayor? What Tom Belga did tell us in 2017 was that you can name it Palin Field at Cumanzellis Park, but you could not name it Palin Park. And you went against what he said, and you wanna change the name to Palin Park. And you know downright well, you can't do that. But you can name it Palin, you can name it Palin Field.
Let's not have, we're not having a conversation. We have sent this to the city manager, so why don't we wait for a report from the city manager regarding these matters? Because.
Well, I'm concerned. I'm not going to change, I'm not gonna offer, I mean, if it's going for, I don't know what the report is. This is already dedicated to a Vietnam veteran who died providing aid to a wounded, his wounded comrades.
Oh, Councilor.
So, in my opinion, we, this one, this option is not viable.
Yeah, but that's why we're giving this to the city manager.
Well, what's the motion, Mr. Mayor?
No, the thing is, we had already made a motion to give this to the city manager, to have the city manager and the city solicitor's office try to work out a plan, so we don't get involved in these type of situations. You brought up something that has question, you brought up some, everybody's brought up issues that are germane to this particular.
I'm all for finding a park. We've been looking for one for five years.
But let's put in this.
It's not gonna be for a Greek American hero, for a monument that is dedicated to all of those people living in the acre that died.
Mr. Mayor, that's fine, because we won't change Roberto Clemente Park, and he was a hero as well, to the Latino Hispanic community. So, thank you.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. Look, this is what we don't wanna, this is what we don't wanna get into.
Yeah.
You go through the chair. But the thing is, the chair's actually made a determination, because the city council's made a determination, to send this to the city manager and the solicitor's office for her to develop a program on how to handle these type of situations. Because, I mean, this could be our life forever, being embroiled in some type of argument over the naming of a park, when there should be, there should be a process that affects and supports everybody in this community, and also supports the will of the city council. So, all I'm asking is that we end this discussion now, because we have sent it to.
I just wanna make clear, I agree, we need to, if we can find a park, then fine, but the notion was that we couldn't change the name of a park before, this one's dedicated to a Vietnam veteran.
Councilor Elliott, I understand, no, Councilor Elliott, I understand that. But we're asking the city manager, we have asked, there was a vote taken, to ask the city manager to determine a policy and approach to handling these type of situations. So, all I'm asking. I'd like to end this at this point. Thank you. Next, we hear by Councilor Leahy. Request the city manager update the city council on the budget for street lighting, line painting, and also update the city council on schedules for the upcoming year for painting lines and streets throughout the City Lowell.
Second.
Second by Councilor Mercier. Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager, just, if we can get an update on where we are, I'm surprised the traffic engineer left. I thought she would've liked this motion, so. But, you know, if we can get a little extra money in that account to make sure that we get the streets, thank you, Connor, if we can get the streets painted, there's a lot of streets that are, just have fallen behind. And let's, you know, have a discussion, if it's another 5,000, another 10,000, to see how it is. I know we divide it up, right? It's basically 50, but 25 goes to the police department, 25 to traffic, maybe. So, if we can just have an update before budget, so we can help guide you, that would be great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Next, by Councilor Cirillo. Request the Arts and Culture Subcommittee meet. Do we have cool maker presentation?
Second.
Second by Councilor Noon. Councilor Cirillo?
That's it, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Okay. Next, by Councilor Conway. Request the city manager and Department Planning Development set up a meeting with the area of Chamber of Commerce organizations Lowell Plan to develop strategies to attract new businesses and jobs, commercial and industrial, to the city. Second by Councilor Leahy. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it basically speaks for itself. I think it's a good idea to periodically bring some people together, bring some of the individuals that I think that have some information that we can perhaps exchange. And, you know, there was a, there was an individual that said to me back a while ago, they said, "You know, have you taken a look at Burlington and some of the things that have gone on there in the last five or 10 years?" Well, needless to say, the, it has an advantage because of the geography and so forth. I think everyone understands that. But I think it's important, too, that, you know, municipalities, including Lowell and everyone else, we're always trying to fine tune, we're always trying to find something that, you know, give us a bit of an edge, that can help us out with economic development. And this council and other councils have done this for years. And all I'm saying now is that, you know, let's, let's take a look and see if there's, if there's anything out there that we might be able to, should we say, clone for our city that could help us out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Melanzos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll support the motion, because I do think it's good to communicate. And I think that our successes from an economic development standpoint has always been through partnerships. But there is a lot going on in the city. You just have to look around at the work that the Lowell Plan is doing with, with the banking community through the LDFC. They have the Downtown Venture Fund. If you look at our unemployment rate, it's very low. We have the Industrial Development Fund, where you can borrow up to $250,000 at a fixed rate of, I think it's 40% of the prime rate, with a floor of 5%. We work very closely with the University of Massachusetts at Lowell. We have an incubator fund program now, where the bank stepped up and put up a million dollars. And you can borrow up to $100,000 in that particular program. And that actually goes through the Director of the New Venture Development Program at UMass Lowell. The Chamber of Commerce, as Councilor Conway mentioned, the Chamber of Commerce, which is the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce, which includes the area towns. They do do some promoting, they don't necessarily do the lending that these other groups do, but they do do promoting. And then we also have the Middlesex Three Coalition that we were all a part of as well. But if you look at, again, when I first saw the motion, it implied that we weren't doing anything, when it's just quite the opposite. And you've got people from Burlington looking at what we're doing up in Lowell, especially as it relates to UMass Lowell and Middlesex Community College, to create, to create businesses to fill the second and third floor space, spaces. We actually have the Neighborhood Improvement Loan Program that the LDFC also runs in partnership with a lot, with a lot of the neighborhood groups. Again, I'm gonna support the motion, because it really does create communication and maybe expands upon the partnership. But, again, it's a fluid process, but I don't want the motion, and I don't think Councilor Conway does either, to imply that we're sitting on our hands and not doing anything, because it's exactly the opposite. Thank you.
Councilor Kennedy and Councilor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good motion as well. I think that any quest for new ideas or, that have to do with economic development certainly serve the city well. And you'll recall, Mr. Mayor, that we, you and I were at the Greek Independence Day Parade down in Boston a couple of weeks ago, and had a conversation with Mayor Walsh down there before the parade began. And he was very generous in telling us that if there was ever a company that was looking at Lowell, that he could make a call for, that would move from Boston to Lowell, that he would be quite willing to do that, because the mayor is, I think people are starting to realize, realize that economic development really has a regional impact. It has an impact, sure, in terms of real estate taxes, but in terms of jobs and the, and the overall impact, it ends up being regional, more than just affecting just one community. And along the lines, as long as we're talking about economic development, I would like to announce that yesterday, we had one-third of the Massachusetts State Senate in the city for most of the day. And the theme of that visit was economic development. And they ended up listening to three startup companies at Lowell make presentations over at Warner-Lance at Mills, and touring the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, and Mill City Five, and several other, UTEC, and also some of the newer buildings for Middlesex Community College. And I just, that visit required a certain amount of logistics. So, I just would like to thank the City of Lowell for everything they did, and also Middlesex Community College and UTEC, and Mill City Grows, which was also included in that tour, and the three startup companies, and Polly White, as well as Lowell National Park for their cooperation, in order to get everybody, to move everybody around the city over several hours, and get them to, to stay on schedule and to, to make all of those visits, required cooperation by a lot of different people in the city. But I think everybody, the, you know, one-third, anytime you can get one-third of the Massachusetts State Senate to visit your community for the day, I think it, it can only serve well at budget time. It's a lot easier, I think, to convince other senators that you may need something in your community if they've seen it firsthand, rather than to just listen to you talk about it. So, I think it was a worthwhile visit yesterday, and I just was very pleased with it. And I just wanna thank everybody that was involved.
Actually, I wanna commend Senator Kennedy for what he did. I joined up about 11:30 with the group at the Hamilton Canal area. And the one thing that was quite interesting was that no, no one was in a hurry to leave. They were still asking a lot of questions, good questions, as to how did we do it, why did we do it, and what's next? So, I mean, I thought that went very well and put Lowell in a, in a great place. But Council, Senator Kennedy, Councilor Kennedy is correct. Mayor Walsh did speak to us. And he's, we've invited him to Lowell, he came to Lowell, as you're well aware, with the Lowell Plan September opening. But he said that, you know, there are times when a call from a mayor like himself to any company that we might like to have come to Lowell. I mean, he would help in, you know, stating why Lowell is the place to be, and do everything he can through his office to help us. So, that was unsolicited, that was offered to him by, he offered that to us. So, that was great to hear. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think that, you know, when I, and that's good news to hear from Senator Kennedy in regards to, you know, potential economic development. The motion, I think, was pretty generic, just to tap into, once again, different areas and, as Councilor Melanzos said, partnerships. Obviously, that's what this, this city has thrived on, coming up with partnerships in all different fields. This here, you know, when, I think a couple of weeks ago, when I brought up a motion on where I saw a city in Southern California talking about an incentive program for employees, that's something we don't have. But, and it's something that most cities don't have. But why not? Is it a possibility that we could tap into something like that, that might be a little nugget that can help us out? What other things can, can we possibly come up with? And I realize the people, whether they're sitting here or in other parts of the city, they're working hard, there's no doubt about it. But sometimes it doesn't hurt to get back to the table, or, again, create some other type of partnerships that, that might open up new doors for us. It's as simple as that. It's not, and again, not any disrespect to any specific group or individual. I just wanna try to, you know, the bottom line, like everybody here, I think we just wanna try to increase our economic development. Of course, we gotta, you know, all you have to do is drive downtown, we have a lot of vacant places there. And I think everybody here would love to have those filled up. So, anyways, it, I'd be anxiously waiting for a report from the city manager on this and see how we could develop it. Thank you.
Councilor Elliott?
No, I think it's, I think everything has been, has been mentioned. I like the idea of the, you know, going to the chambers, because chambers have members, and members clearly will express what their, what works, what doesn't work, what the challenges are. So, I think, like, like going out to, you know, outside of the city, or maybe even the region to hear, again, how can we benefit? How can we improve? You know, what are the similarities, what are the differences? So, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Councilor, I'm sorry, Madam Manager?
Thank you. We will get a full report to you on this. There is, obviously, as has been said, you know, it's always helpful to look around and learn from others, but also to, also give the council a report on all the things that are ongoing, including new businesses that have come into the city, and some of the outreach that we're doing through planning and development, and other initiatives outside the city where the city is participating in connection with economic development. So, I think it's, you know, a good idea to take inventory and stock, whether it's the Lowell Plan or other partners across the city, but also update the council on ongoing activities. I know Andrew Shapiro came before with a report, I think, at the time, he wasn't able to give the full report, but we'll update that and also bring more, more recent developments to the council.
Thank you.
All right. Next, by Councilor Elliott. Request the city manager work with the Portuguese community leaders to discuss options to recognize and honor Dealinda Mello, Director of International Institute for 30 Years.
Second.
Second by Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you. The motion does speak for itself, and I did ask the manager to meet with the community leaders, knowing that we're still in the process of coming up with the policy, if you will. We had the International Institute here tonight, celebrating the 100th anniversary. One person that was very, very instrumental in the, at the outset, not certainly in 1918, but she joined, she served on, she served on the Board of Directors up to 39, and she was promoted to Executive Director. She held, she held that role for 21 years. So, Middlesex Community College has set up a scholarship fund. And I do recall a number of years ago, when I was the mayor, the Portuguese community dedicated a stage at one of the clubs. But considering the significance of her contributions, as I mentioned, she served on the Board of Directors since 1939, and appointed Executive Director in 1958. She did, she dedicated her life to care for and help everyone, regardless of their race, of their color, their creed, their nationality. And she believed that every immigrant, every refugee brings with them contributions, talent, skills. So, the scholarship was named on her behalf, and I believe they gave the first scholarship just this year to an Iraqi immigrant, because education was paramount to Dealinda. And so, I'll stop there and have more to say in the future. But I do think it's important that we honor and recognize Dealinda Mello for her contributions to the city.
She was the rock of that organization, no question. Good motion.
Mayor Samaras' motion requests the city manager instruct Water Department to provide report on condition of the drinking water distribution network in the City of Lowell. We hear second. Second by Councilor Melanzos. Mayor Samaras.
Thank you. This motion, really, there's no, there's nothing to say there is anything wrong with our Water Department. I think we have actually one of the best in the region, there's no question about that. But when you look at the problems that have happened in Flint, Michigan, and other communities across the country, it's because the communities failed to update or upkeep their, the water supply in a proper fashion. I just wanna make, I just would like to know, you know, just receive the plan of action that this city takes in making sure that our water is safe for the people that drink that water. I, because I did talk to some people who came to the City of Lowell, it was a conference, I guess, in the greater Boston area, and they were from Flint, Michigan. And the stories that they told of what happened to many of the families, children, the elderly, because of the water problems. And you'd say, a city like Flint, Michigan, this should not happen. So, it's just a concern that I have. We've got something good. I just wanna make sure that we always maintain this department as we have. And even if we have to do a little more, we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Samaras. Next, Mayor Samaras requests city manager instruct the proper department to work with representative of Liberian community on the installation of monument near City Hall and/or JFK Plaza, similar to the other ethnic monuments. Do we hear second? Second by Councilor Mercier. Mayor Samaras.
Now, basically, that motion speaks for itself.
Next, Mayor Samaras requests the city manager instruct the proper department Next, Ms. Samaras requests the city manager to instruct the proper department to develop a standard procedure and protocol for the community group wishing to install monument near City Hall or JFK Plaza. Do we hear second? Second by Counselor Cirillo, Ms. Samaras.
This is, I mean, I think we have to look at this, because we want to avoid any problems in the future. There are many communities that are now part of the city of Lowell, and I think many other groups are looking to put monuments at City Hall. But the issue is, how much space do we have? And I think what- to prevent us having a problem down the road and denying anybody, we have to come up with some type of alternative solutions. So, it's just being practical. We've had issues about the naming of the park or changing names of the park. I think this falls suit with that, and this is just to ensure that we do not have problems. We've got some wonderful monuments that surround City Hall. It speaks to the greatness of this city, and how this city is truly welcoming. But there's no question, space is an issue, and to prevent any problems from down the road, Madam Manager, I'd like to see if you could, you know, with your team, come up with some solutions that we could have to deal with this in the future.
Counselor Cirillo?
Hi, yes. I did look, and we don't have a standard for monuments currently, specifically for monuments. And I'm wondering if the standard could also include maintaining and upkeep of the monuments also? Because I'm thinking about the monument at Lemieux Park on Mill Street, and that monument doesn't have a foundation, so it's actually sinking. So, I'm thinking about upkeep of the monuments, if that could be a part of the standard also.
Thank you. Do we hear announcement? Counselor Leahy?
Sort of an announcement, but it's kind of like a point of personal privilege, if you don't mind. I just wanted to ask, in the- for the sake of time, I wanted to ask the mayor, with the upcoming selection of the superintendent of schools, I think that we should seriously consider asking the two finalists from the Boston Superintendent search to come to Lowell to be interviewed. I think it'd be important to have- have them interview, if they want to, send out a letter and ask them if they'd be interested in coming up to Lowell, taking a look at the school system, and join the finalists for the interview.
Ms. Samaras, you have to respond?
Just put that out there. I know Jerry Nutter put that out there, School Committee Man Jerry Nutter, and I think it's- it's an important thing to consider.
Well, I'm not sure what Mr. Nutter put out. The one thing that we can't do is we cannot ask the Boston City School Committee to give us the names.
No, no, they're already out there. Once they make a selection this week-
If they're out there.
Right, once they make a selection this week, I think we should reach out to the two finalists that didn't make it, and ask them to interview in Lowell.
Okay, the issue is, though, anybody applying for the Boston position, I don't think would be looking like, you know, going to a much smaller city. They would be looking to go into a Detroit, you know, whatever. But the thing is, we can do that. I mean, it's a simple- it's a simple process.
Well, again, my first blush, if I could-
Counselor Melonazo, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure that would even be appropriate, I have to honestly say. If they didn't apply to Lowell in the first place, and they're going to be runners-up in Boston in the second place, why would we call them? I just don't understand. We're looking for excellence here. We're not looking for someone's, well, whatever. I just- I'm shocked- I'm shocked by the- I'm even shocked by the suggestion.
Right. Ms. Samaras and then Counselor-
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. This isn't even a motion or anything on the agenda. This is- we're supposed to be in announcements.
Right, no. Allow me to say something, okay? I would- this would be if all candidates failed, okay? There is no way we're going to bring in- I'm going to call up and bring somebody in, because they applied somewhere else.
And why are you carrying Jerry Nutter's water? I don't get it. I don't get it. I really don't get it.
Please, Counselor.
Why?
Please.
I don't understand, why?
Let us move on to the announcement, please. Thank you very much. Counselor, Ms. Samaras, announcement, sir.
But I'll just- but no, excuse me. No, no. There's dialogue going on.
Ms. Samaras, go ahead.
I was asked a question. I said, "Look, if all the candidates fail, and we have to revisit-"
Ms. Samaras?
No.
Ms. Samaras, please, your announcement, sir.
But I just wanted to say that I would never do that.
Your announcement, thank you, sir.
The Office of the Mayor and the Election Commission and the Department of Planning and Development will be hosting the Complete Count Committee kickoff event, which will be held on Thursday, April 25th, this Thursday, at the Lowell Senior Center, starting from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This committee's purpose is to utilize local knowledge, influence, and resources to maximize the response rate of the federal census in 2020. The Complete Count Committee will be comprised of engaged residents, local neighborhoods, and community groups, as well as nonprofits and educational organizations. The public is welcome and encouraged to attend the Complete Count Committee kickoff on April 25th, to help us educate the community and promote the census through locally-based, targeted outreach efforts. The data collective will be used to redraw ward and precinct lines, determine how many seats your state and Congress will get, guide how 675 billion in federal funding is to be distributed to states and communities each year, create jobs, provide housing, prepare for emergencies, build schools, roads, and hospitals. Basically, this is an important meeting, that people from the city of Lowell are welcome to come to the Senior Center to talk about how best to conduct this census, and it's important. And another announcement, next Monday on April 29th marks the beginning of the 2019 Celebration of Learning Festival hosted by the Lowell City of Learning Committee. The opening ceremony, initial program, will be a retrospective on the life and impact of Dr. Patrick Morgan, and how it applies to our modern city. The event, City of Learning Realizing that the Morgan Legacy, will be held at 6:00 p.m. at the Richard and Nancy Donahue Family Academic Arts Center on the campus of Middlesex Community College, the former Rialto Building, and will be headlined by a panel moderated by Dr. John Woody, featuring Paul Marion, Marie Sweeney, and myself. There will also be visitors from the Cork Island present- to present and talk about their own experiences as a UNESCO City of Learning, so it's a pretty busy week.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Ms. Samaras. Counselor Cirillo, you have any announcement?
No.
You do? Okay, thank you. We need to vote, go into executive session. A motion to go into executive session, executive session regarding a matter of litigation, namely, who would at all City of Lowell public discussion, or which would have a detrimental effect on the city position. So, do we hear a motion to go into executive session? Counselor Cirillo? Counselor Kennedy, second it? We go into adjourn from the executive session.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?